Okay, good evening.
Is it already time?
Let me go through some little details here. It is 6:35. It is Tuesday, July 24, 2018. We're in the C.R. Room, the Community Center in Carson City. It is the time, date, and place for the scheduled Carson City School District School Board meeting. With that, I'll go on to Agenda Item Number One, Adoption of the Agenda as Submitted.
Submitted.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds. All in fair? Agenda Item Number Two, Adjournment to Close Session per NRS 28822044 to Discuss Labor Relations with the District's Management Representatives for Discussion only.
Okay, well now reconvened a public session. We're on agenda item number three. We'll go to agenda item number four, and that's the flag salute. So if everyone would stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to all who are just joining us. Ann Lupe, good to see you here as our school trustee-elect. Okay, agenda item number five, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I really don't have a lot. I figured that what I would say tonight in my report will be reflected in my presentations later tonight.
Right, agenda item number six, board reports, board member comments. Start with Ryan. Laurel.
Just a public service announcement, in case anyone is watching and not on some kind of trip. This Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 at the LDS Church on the corner of Solomon and Robinson, there's going to be a free clothing exchange. So there'll be lots of clothing available for students and for adults as well. So I'm just putting it out there, if anybody wants to stop by and get some new school clothes. They're gently used clothes, but they can still get some for free.
Joe?
Just a quick update, the high school, if you've driven by or if you haven't, probably the most noticeable thing over the summer is the parking lots have all been crack-filled and sealed and restriped, and they look good. The new bus lane is in, so that we're almost ready for the buses now to be off of Robinson Street and onto the parking lot. The only remaining item is a punch-through between the transportation yard and the south parking lot, and that should be happening soon. So it's, if you drive by, things are looking pretty good out there.
Just a reminder that September 22nd in Reno is going to be the yearly Family Engagement Summit. It'll be at TMCC at 9:00. We're working on getting some great, we have some really good speakers, so I'll have more about that as we go on, get closer to the date.
What's the date?
It's at 9:22, September 22nd.
And that's parent and family.
Trustee Wilkie.
Parent and family again.
I want you to know Carson will be presenting at that with our AP, our parent academic parent teacher teams.
And I saw the, I'm on that committee, so that's how I know.
And President has no reports this evening. Agenda item number seven, association reports. Okay, seeing none. Going down to agenda item number eight, public comment. Any, in the audience that wants to come forward and talk about anything that is not on the agenda? Just have a good time, so. Seeing none. Agenda item number nine, which is the discussion and possible action on the Nevada Association of School Boards, NASB, nominations to be considered for recognition during the 2018 Annual Conference. This is for possible action, and I'll, it'll begin with Stacy.
So as you guys know, every November, we have our annual conference, and then we end up having the banquet at the end and having our award ceremony. So, talk about it every year, but this year it looks really good. I'm really proud of you all. We've got quite a few nominations in a lot of categories, and it's going to be a little different because it'll be in Vegas, but we're still looking for a good turnout. So I'll turn it over to Ron to kind of go over what we decided and who and their for.
Okay, and before I begin, you know, I talked to Laurel earlier, and Stacy, I've mentioned it to you, on the Educator of the Year Award, we had three candidates, Joanna Kaiser, what you and Laurel, you know, had submitted on Jennifer Chandler and Sarah Lobzinger, and then Mike Walker on Laura Valli. And the question is, you know, a decision was made, and I made that decision, that we would go with Jennifer Chandler and Sarah Lobzinger. Because of what they did, it's something that is, it rises above what's normally put in, and it's something that would benefit not only us, the state, and probably our country in the, in the conversation of how do we fill teacher positions. Okay, that was made. However, trustee Walker made a good case for Laura Valli, and what she has done for the district over a number of years. And so the question that I put to Laurel and to, go ahead.
And not just the district, but I mean, she's instrumental in the profession nationwide, statewide. So I mean, and she's just one of those people that is really below the radar. And I guess my point that I made to trustee Schwarsek is that, you know, in this district, we have a lot of employees in every one of our levels that work really hard, and we don't know them, and we don't give them the recognition that they probably don't even want, but that they deserve. And so my point is, we need to do a better job of not just, there's the superstars that we see presenting to us at the board meeting, meeting after meeting after meeting, and they're doing great work, and none of us would say anything about that. But there's those people that have a panic attack when they hear they have to go to a school board meeting, and they're working just as hard back at their sites or whatnot. And so I'm encouraging us as a board and our administrators to help us recognize some of these unsung heroes, because we have great people in this school district that are going unrecognized. And so that's my point. And it's not against anybody, it's just that I think there's more we could do.
No, and that's, point well taken. But in this case, what I ask, and since we have the president, madam president, and we have a director, may we submit, I mean, more than one nomination?
I'm reading the note on the form that says, "School boards may nominate educators from elementary, secondary, or district level who are teachers, administrators, or educational staff. Each board may nominate only one individual in this category." So part of me was like, oh yay, we can do elementary, secondary, district, you know, we can do, we can only nominate one, is, just one. And, and I guess that makes me question with nominating, but I know both of them did it as a teams, Mrs. Chandler and Mrs. Lobzinger, to do that, is their team effort one nomination for what they've accomplished, or is that nominating two? Stacy?
I'm pretty sure because they're a team, that that, because we've had that in the past. But I will email Dottie and find and make sure we get a clarification on that. But I know that in the past, if you look through the past winners, there's ones where there's two because they're team teachers, especially like in kindergarten, first grade, and stuff like that. But I will confirm that right now.
Okay, let's, tonight, what we want to accomplish, of the, the ones that are in the packet nominated, if we approve that these are the people we want to go forward and be nominated, then we're going to sign the nominating form tonight, all of us. Those in which things have not been written will be written, but we'll get this thing, get all the signatures and the technicalities out of the way. But the key is, are these the people that we want to nominate? And the other thing is, are there people that should be on there that we haven't nominated? I mean, we've got, I think the school board nomination, but Stacy, you had a recommendation for something in Lyon County, so.
Yeah, I was thinking, because we won the local governance team last year, so I was thinking of Lyon, because they've done a lot of different stuff with their policies, and they've done certain things, and so I'm, I'm trying to accumulate those.
Okay, I think I.
And you could help me with that.
I would agree with, with that nomination, because I, I don't think it's likely, since we won it last year, that they're not going to do it again. Yeah.
It's a 17-year. You're right.
And then Director of the Year, from my viewpoint, was Sherry from Mineral County, because she, they had that walk for graduation stuff, and she's helped out at different events, but she has given her letter of resignation. So I was thinking that you've done a lot there too, Laurel, with your English mastery and stuff, so I think that you would be a good fit for that Director of the Year position, nomination. And then of course, School Board of the Year, we didn't win that last year, so I think we can still put ourselves in there too.
And I've got our letter from last year that I. Turn on my mic. I've got our letter from last year that I'd like to update with some stuff, so if you guys can think of some extra things, that, and I'll just pass around, because I only printed one copy of it, so you can see, and just like, put in some notes, highlights from this year of accomplishments that we did, because last year it kind of focused on the refresh of the strategic plan, and so what are some of those things? But I think we need to update how our, how our student, how our student learner model is increasing our graduation rates at both high schools, and how, just, just anything else that's coming. I was thinking of the.
I want to put in the accreditation.
That's, that's what I was thinking, we could do that as well, and maybe the AP, AP results, results.
And jumpstart results.
Accreditation, okay.
There's a lot of good stuff to.
Yeah, so just, and, and this one was a two and a half page letter, so we can add some stuff, delete some stuff. But the other thing I was thinking of is the bonding issues and the new construction that we're starting at Pioneer High School, and I don't know how to word it, but the securing the rights to purchase the land in the new development for a future school site, that was a pretty significant achievement. So some of those things, okay, accreditation, AP results, accreditation. So anyway, I'll just pass that around and rework that one. And then I was also thinking for Superintendent of the Year, Mr. Stokes, because unless there's any other superintendents, you guys want to nominate from any other.
No.
But I, I think he's.
Yeah, I think.
Done a valuable service for, for not only our district, but also the state.
With a, with a couple of board members, can we get the grading criteria from last year for the, the Board of the Year, and then we can improve our application for this year maybe?
If it's available.
Oh, okay.
It's classified, but I could say we did really well last year.
Okay, we'll go through each of these, you know, nominations, and I talked to Laurel earlier, and she agreed, you know, to work with Richard as we complete this. This would be Laurel, Richard, and Renee, that'll actually be.
Well, and Dan Davis helps too.
Yeah, so, yeah, whatever it is, we can update it. Because we go through these, the ones of the nominations of which there is a write-up, I mean, that was Richard. Richard knows the staff, we don't. So all it was, was what are the names, and he would do the, the important thing is to make them stand out. Richard, you have something to say?
I was just going to say, I'd appreciate anybody's eyes on that to make sure, because there are, as I reread some of them, there's some long sentences and a few little things that need to be fixed. So we'll go over them again with anybody's feedback that would like to provide it, and clean them up so that they're as presentable as they can be.
But, but thank you for taking the time to, to actually do this. I think what Stacy says, if we can highlight our staff to be, I, I mean, we've got to recognize, Mike, like you said, but whatever goes forward for a statewide recognition, I think we ought to be, we're proud of our staff, and we want to get the right words. So, and, and Richard, I thank you for taking the time to do this. Okay, so let's, let's go through everything, let's just, this is for possible action, so let's just make sure we're, we're all in agreement. Hold on, just let me get something here. Okay, if you will, we'll go through the first one, for the Trent Journalism Formata Reporting, and it was agreed upon that Phil Brady, who was a Carson High teacher, that I think it was over and above anything, because I looked forward, well, I used to look forward to Sunday's paper, now it's, it'll probably be in Saturday's paper, but that, you know, it's, it's not only students, staff, it's what, the good things that have, that have happened at Carson High. So if, unless there's any disagreement, I think that's a, a great nomination.
I was wondering if we wanted to include in the nomination any of the articles, like if we could get a copy of some of the articles, that might be a good thing to put in there.
I think since it's a one-page letter, and we have up to three pages, I think that's a great idea, because that's what I did with Mr. Zonas last year.
One of his, one of the articles, I, to me, the section where, on how he handled the car accident last year, and how that was, that would be something good to include.
And probably Dan would have that as our information officer, that maybe.
You can find that.
Okay. And again, Laurel, you might even just work with, with Dan and Richard, that we get that included.
Are you wanting to do one at a time, or you want to do everybody at once?
No, let's just go through, in case there's any.
We can get it on record, recognize the people that are nominated.
Okay, so. Okay, so the NASB School Administrator of the Year, this is one that we can forward to, and there are two. The first one is Michelle Lewis, and you've probably read her write-up, and she's, I mean, she leaves a major legacy here at, within the Carson City School District, if not, you know, the high school. And secondly, Jason Zona, I mean, he's done an unbelievable job at Pioneer. And I think forwarding these two, I see no reason why we shouldn't get words for both of them. So if there's no objections, we'll go on.
No, then I think on Jason's, though, there's a graph in the back of one of these that has the graduation rate for the last four years. I think we should attach that for that one.
And then just on Michelle's, where you talk about the increasing number of students taking CTE courses, but also earning certifications, if we have any specific numbers to put in there, I think that that's helpful to support it with numbers.
Yeah, we're well above the state average in every category, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, not that I contributed a whole lot here, but knowing both of these, I don't know that either of these pages really encompasses what, the value that each of them is, and so, and I don't know if you could on a simple write-up, but it's, there's, there's a lot.
Nice thing is we have, nice thing is we have a lot of specifics we can pull from.
From, yeah. And I mean, and this is kind of like a rough draft, we've never done this many nominations, and it's really exciting to be able to highlight our staff, because we don't get to do that a lot, and especially at a state level. So I think if we can add to these, like you're saying, Ryan, with some details, then we should. I don't know if Mr. Stokes is going to have that kind of time, if maybe some of us want to pick one or two that we could get into and get at least some of that stuff, and then give it to Laurel and Dan, and they could have it done.
Forward to, yeah, to Richard.
Yeah, so I think that's a, but that's a really good idea.
Okay, going on to next, the-
The, the School District Employee Making A Difference. And this one, you know, is great. And you know the nominee, Mark Kornick, we all know him for his energy savings, but what he has done for the kids in this district with the, the energy-saving programs, I don't know, Stacy and I were at the governor's, you know, mansion here at the end of school, there's over 160 parents and students that were, and these students, because of Mark's effort, and through partnering with, was it McKendrick?
McKendrick.
McKendrick, and they all came through, they presented, I mean, they were, well, the kids were proud, but it was energy-saving things. And one of them, one of the things that were presented by the kids is being put into place, you know, within the district, is this energy-saving measure. So, and Mike, again, you know, we forget about this. Now, in talking with Richard, Richard was the one that brought this up, but what Mark has done for this district has gone well beyond.
And not just that, I think that also the streamlining of, the cleaning of classrooms, and the attention to detail that is now taken to kind of kill germs and stop outbreaks of whatever gunk little guys have, I mean, that was his initiative a few years ago, and it was, I mean, it's, there's a lot there, he's a great employee, so I mean, that's another person that's deserving of recognition.
Of recognition, yeah. Okay, the District Level Administrator of the Year, Impacting Student Achievement. And again, district level, and this one, and Sue Keeman's here, and we put, and again, in talking with Richard, in all of the, I mean, we could have gone with AJ, I mean, there's a lot of district-level employees, you know, that are really well-deserving. But in this case, we get to go with one. Who has made an impact over the years, and we've been around long enough to know that Sue is, at many times has a thankless jobs, gets, you know, gets beat up, but she keeps bringing good stuff forward, and always, you know, on the kids, so, and again.
Just something I'd add as a paragraph about the number of new curriculum adoptions that she was able to oversee and get through in the last school year. That was a tremendous amount of work accomplished in one year, that directly impacts student learning.
Going on to the Individual Friend Of K-12 Public Education, and again, Stacy had recommended, and we, Richard and I agreed and talked about Maya McKenzie. You know, I can go back in time when Maya, with the Adams Hub, and I remember with her and Jeff Glass, and the first entrepreneurial, the New E Program that was presented to kids. I went to those, and it was the, you know, the first thing that, to be shared with kids, and the kids showed up, and our students, was reflective of the demographics of our school district. And I'm going, thank God, finally. And it was something of value that the kids took away at that day. They take it home to their parents, they were able to talk about how it could, you know, enrich their lives, something they could do, whether it was social responsibility, economic responsibility, but they were in charge of that. So Maya did that, and only with the Adams Hub. In addition, to being on the Technical Advisory Committee for, you know, Michelle Lewis and the CTE program, she also came through in the write-up with what she did with, and helping the flow of monies from, the people that contributed due to that accident from the students, you know, as a, just as a fiscal agent, over and above anything that, you know, she was expected to do, she just jumped forward, so. If there is, you know, if there's any objection, I thought she was a great nominee. Okay, the Innovative Educator of the Year, I think we talked about Jennifer Chan and Sarah Lobzinger, but I believe this one is, I think what those two have done is unbelievable, not only for this district, but, this is going to make a contribution to the state, all school districts, and maybe the country, and how we generate that excitement and interest for more students to get involved in the, in the educational programs at institutions of higher learning, so. Okay, the Board Secretary Or Administrative Assistant, and, I mean, this was a no-brainer, Renee is, you can't, I don't think any of us is going to, you know, how can we find someone? Anyway. Yeah, okay, we've embarrassed Renee enough, but-
Well, and I don't know if it's just, I'm just thinking of this year currently, but we had more weather-related school closures than we've had in my children's school career, and Renee was always the voice on the calls at all hours of the morning, helping us to, helping and answering calls all day long on bus route changes or anything that was going on, so that may be an additional thing to put in that she's done.
And I think that also, if you, if you're an administrator in the district, you usually have to go through Renee before you could talk to the boss. And she usually has real good advice to kind of get you through the short interim, so I think, I think it is true, she, everybody would agree that she's pretty invaluable.
Okay, they, well, the next one will go by. Then we get to the Veterans-
Right, so we can go by that one, too.
These were Stacy's, Stacy's nominations, yeah, we're the oldest. Anyway.
Let's use the word experience.
Use the word experience.
Okay, then the New School Board Member of the Year, it was recommended, Mike Walker, Trustee Walker, and I, for me, I think it's a, he's a great addition, he's, you know, a valuable experience, and he's also an administrator in another district, I mean, we've got the best of all worlds.
And I think your experience at the Department of Ed has been very helpful, too, seeing that side, so.
The Local Governance Team, we're going to, we're not going to put in for that since we got it last year.
We're going to put Lyon County, though.
Oh, I mean Lyon County, excuse me.
Yeah, we're going to do Lyon.
And so Stacy, you'll-
Yeah, I'm going to work with Laurel.
Okay. Do we have anyone writing, or do we have anyone writing letters for Ron, Stacy, and Mike?
We should make them write them for each other.
I'll put together a draft for-
I have my stuff from the NIAA stuff, and we had to put that thing in, that covers an awful lot of stuff that I've done.
And I'll put together some stuff. I'll just, I'll just get some drafts, because somebody want to lick them over with me?
Yeah, just send them over, because I have, I've put together some stuff for Mike. And then-
Okay, the NASB Director of the Year, here, since there's a resignation, this is, we're not going to do anything here.
No, we're going to do Laurel. Laurel does a lot as a director, we're very proud of her.
Excuse me.
We're just thinking, Sherry, because it was her last year.
Okay, the School Board of the Year, and Laurel will just update, or you'll update, and get with Richard, okay. Okay, so we don't have a form in here, but, but, before you leave tonight, we'll, Renee's got the originals, and we'll sign all of those if, everything is agreed upon, and we'll just go forward, and then, okay, if there's any other changes, add changes. Okay.
Usually it's August 14th.
I'm running house to house.
Pardon?
I'm glad I don't have to read that.
What do you got? Yes, go for it, Dan.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the Nevada Association of School Boards nominations to be considered for the 2018 Annual Conference.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any concerns, additional comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, Agenda Item Number 10, Discussion On Possible Action To Use A Portion Of Fiscal Year 2018-19 Budgeted Contingency Funds To Pay And Maintain Certain Staffing And Program Costs For The Read-By-Three RBG3 Program In The District During, you know, That School Year Due To The Loss Of Funding From The RBG3 Grant As Authorized By NRS 354-598-005. All right, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Swerzik, members of the board. As you know, this is an ongoing topic that we've had really since the middle of June, and we've tried to keep the board fairly well apprised of the different interactions that we've had. We did receive some additional information today that I'd like to share with you that is newer. As you recall, Mr. Pavlakis worked to provide a rebuttal to a letter that I received from the Department of Ed, and he had asked in that letter to hear back from the Department of Ed yesterday, July 23rd. Mrs. Keeman made a telephone call to the Department of Ed this afternoon, and while we do not have that letter in our hand, it was indicated in that phone call to Mrs. Keeman that we would receive a reply. Not really sure what's in the letter, but I'll let you know that as soon as I receive it. Also, last week, I received a telephone call from Dr. Steve Canavero, who is the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and Dr. Canavero indicated to me that there would be monies that he expected would be reverted after having been allocated already to other districts, back to the department, that would be unspent authority. And Mrs. Keeman found out today that there was also money in this Title IV coffer that represented about $2.5 to $3 million that was actually held back for contingency purposes. And so there does seem to be a significant amount of money available in this Title IV grant reallocation. Dr. Canavero expressed that this money, or this application for money, would not be available until late September. So if you think logically, just through the process, once the department knows how much money is available, and they put out a request for application, the districts write their proposals and submit them to the Department of Ed, and then they are judged, it's not likely that that money would be available for redistribution or reallocation, probably until late November, early December. Now, that's better than not at all, but without it having been said specifically, both Mrs. Keeman and I, in our individual relationships with people at the Department of Ed, feel like that they have been very willing to contact us, contact us about the availability of this money, and also to help us in meeting the expectations or the details surrounding this proposed grant. So while it's not a sure thing, we do feel like that we would get due consideration as a result of submitting our Read-By-Grade-Three plan for this particular money. I also talked with Dr. Delphin on Friday before he left, and he indicated that the 15 positions that were still open last week have been reduced to nine, so there's some hiring that's going on. He also indicated that the remaining positions, a majority of them are special education. But as we're looking within the Read-By-Grade-Three program to hire teachers, there aren't a lot of fully endorsed teachers ready to go right now at this stage of the game. So if we were to take action tonight to put wheels in motion, to start looking for reading strategists for the Read-By-Grade-Three grant, we may not be able to hire folks immediately. Even if, if we do receive some funding in December, we know that teachers, newly minted teachers, sometimes finish their programs in December, and they're available for hire shortly after the start of the new year, but there's generally not as many people completing their program then as there are during the spring of most years. So we may have some challenges in hiring reading interventionists at this stage in the game. I would, yes, sorry.
So, I mean, I guess, for me, I'm prepared to support your recommendation, and so, I mean, I'm hoping as part of this, you're going to say whether you recommend that we dip into the contingency funds for this or not, so I mean, I hope.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I will make that statement tonight. Carrying on and discussing this dilemma, and taking into account our lengthy discussion from our last meeting, talking with Mr. Fueeling, we feel that it is imperative that if we do move, if we do move forward with, with pursuing or implementing the Read-By-Grade-Three program that we've been discussing, that it only be for a one-year period of time. Make that statement for several reasons. One, there is concern about coming back with unobligated monies from the district, not only for Read-By-Grade-Three, but really any program, should we not be successful in receiving grant monies? And, and also taking into account the statement that was made at our last meeting, that this is an unusual condition or situation, and possibly could serve in that position of being an extraordinary circumstance. In our discussion, Mr. Fueeling also mentioned that we have, in the last three budgetary years, been able to put away money that has been unspent, which has added to our ending fund balance, obviously strengthening our overall financial position. And, and I think it must also be said at this state of the game, that a lot of the things that I'm sharing with you, and things that we have identified, really is imperfect information. And so there's no doubt- And so there's no doubt that taking a step tonight would be a bit of a leap of faith based on some of these imperfect information conditions. I'd also like to state that the Department of Education has indicated that there will be a budget correction. We expect that to happen within maybe the next four years. This is a condition that would impact our school district directly. I know we've mentioned it to this body before where in the past decade, we have received more per pupil amounts than other school districts have, and this is all part of the finessing or changing of some of the details about how the per pupil allotments are arrived at. And if that happens, it could impact our school district to the tune of approximately $5 million. I've heard it said in public meetings that it's likely that that adjustment, which would end up as a reduction in our part, would be done over a incremental period of time up to four years. So that's another, I think, important aspect to think of as we, as we talk about spending money from our general fund.
So, question about that. So, is that a projection that, I mean, truly that depends on the outcome of this November's election and what our legislature decides to do about funding, which I think that most people are hoping it's going to increase educational support.
Yeah, I wish the formula were more concrete. Sadly, it's not and we do recognize that the legislature could result in a change in a lot of things. I've been involved just recently in trying to set up, to have a group come and speak to this body, that their title is Fund Our Future Nevada, and they're trying to get to all of the school boards, they hope to be able to put together a resolution. But they're essentially a lobbying group that are made up of parents and educators that want to change the way education's being funded. So all of those things could come into play prior to this course correction coming about that has been discussed. But I did want to make sure that we've recalled that and that is a condition for us to consider. So consequently, last time we met, I made the statement that I could not support us spending general fund dollars to put forward the cost to maintain just the, kind of the minimum program related to Read-By-Grade-Three, which is $325,120. Tonight, given conversations with my team and also discussions with the Department of Education, I believe that we are in a fairly strong position to be able to move forward with spending unbudgeted funds from our general fund to the tune of $325,120, making application to the Department of Education for Title IV funds and seeing if we can put the wheels in motion to keep our Read-By-Grade-Three program at least working to the extent that we've talked about it in the last several meetings. Any questions for me?
The amount that we're going to be voting on, nothing has changed from last meeting in terms of how that's going to be allocated. We had a lot of discussions about what each school felt they needed and I just want to make sure that we're still seeing the same allocation or at least understanding what the allocation is.
Yes, thank you for that. We do have that one slide we'll bring back up. So this slide shows the bottom line and the line through the red font line, which describes the Empire Teacher Interventionists, that is being funded out of another grant. And so that amount was taken out, but it doesn't mean that position goes away, so that would continue. And the other schools then would be serviced to the dollar amount that you see listed there. Mrs. Keem, anything you want to add?
Nothing's changed from the presentations that we've had. This has been the slide that's been consistent. The principals brought to me their data to support the fact that the positions that they had or the programs that they were requesting netted academic achievements for their school.
AJ, let's just go through the mechanics. We're talking about a contingency account, not a fund, within the general fund, so it's general fund dollars. We'll vote in this tonight, which I don't know which ways, hopefully it goes in a positive direction. Given what Richard said, if we are successful with these additional funds and if those funds become available, say in December, January, whenever, then in effect, we can go back accounting-wise to, in effect, make the contingency account whole.
That is correct. So if the, if there would be grant funding for those positions, the expenditures attributed to them would be moved out of the general fund and into the appropriate grant fund, effectively freeing those contingency dollars again and making it whole.
And we do this retroactively.
Correct.
So we'd make sure to write that in the application, that that's what we're going to do when we do our request for that grant, correct? That we're going to ask for those retroactive expenses?
I think that the, I think we're, if I'm understanding it, we would just simply be requesting, at a minimum, we would be requesting this. So then whatever the funding would be, I don't know that we, I don't know that within the grant itself, it would say that we're paying for these items that we have already been approved by the.
Sometimes, sometimes it's specific and I'm sure Valerie will look into that. She's pretty thorough.
That's a good question. Okay, thank you.
We have a, we're going to be scheduling a meeting with the Nevada Department of Education. They're going to call me tomorrow to set up a meeting time to go over our potential application for this grant.
Because my concern is just if we had already expended it and they said, oh, no, you can't get reimbursed, then we're having to figure out what to do without funds differently.
Sure. That's a good question, actually. And by looking at the application information, we anticipate asking for more than what is indicated on this paper. There are other things that are available through that grant that we can apply for. So that doesn't necessarily limit what we would ask for in the grant.
And given what you said, I mean, it's not a guarantee that we will get the grant funds, but the contingency account, the purpose is for, to be used for unforeseen or uncontrollable conditions. And this was one that was unforeseen, uncontrollable, that affects the lives of our struggling students. And I think it's, with or without that funding, I think it's the, it's the appropriate thing to do. But anyway.
Same line, though. I mean, and I do, I'll just say again, I think that as a district, we need to have a conversation about as the state's belt is tightened. I mean, we have our CTE program, which I think is almost entirely funded with grant funds. You know what I mean? So as these decisions are, we've been very lucky so far. And so when it comes down to we aren't getting the funds that we're used to for some of these programs, you know, we, we aren't going to be sitting on enough contingency funds to remedy everything. And so I think that we have to start kind of having a backup plan, I guess.
Yeah, and I think that's, you're right. And I think we do that during the normal budget cycle where we set priorities. This came unexpectedly after. And that's why we have an contingency account. Any further comments, questions?
Just a question because it came up quite a bit at the last time we discussed this supplanting. I just would like a little bit more reassurance that providing these additional supports at our non-Title I schools isn't going to create an issue with supplanting and if it's only for one year, will we be able to maintain those through, do we get a new grant and then somehow it maintains? I just, I'm a little concerned about the supplanting possibility.
So the recommendation is that this is for one year because when there is a sudden change in funding and you put something in place for one year, it's not as frowned upon as if you're going to make it seem like you're going to do this forever. The other piece is that Valerie Dockry, it's quicker if I do it through my phone, when we were, she responded back today that the new rules around supplanting is that there needs to be equity in the general fund expenditures that supports that would be equal at all schools. And so the difference here is that should you just provide funding for Fritsch or Seliger, that provides more general fund expenditures to those non-Title schools over the Title schools. But being that the, Mr. Stokes is saying that it's okay to say that we, you could spend $325,120 for all the schools, then it's not causing that inequity.
But we're not spending for Empire. Is that a problem that we are not spending anything for Empire?
When it goes, it goes back to the one year. We're covered there because it goes back to the one year. And we'll see too what happens with the NSPF and what other supports we'll be able to provide Empire, but it goes back to the one year. That's going to be the biggest piece.
You have it, oh, sorry.
So after the one year, just so I'm clear, after the one year of providing for these services through the general fund contingency fund, if the next year we provide the services but we fund them from somewhere, through a grant, that is not a problem because it's from a different funding source?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would just add that at your individual chairs, you have a proposed motion. The bottom sentence indicates that the superintendent and legal counsel will continue to pursue efforts to secure what funding is possible. And so while there may or may not be a legal outcome to our question about not receiving the initial grant funding, we'll continue to study all aspects of the question and do what appears to be reasonable and keep the board appraised of all of those actions as they come about.
Before we take a motion, let me just ask our legal counsel. You had written a letter, which we have in our packet, clearly outlining the issues. You requested that we receive this letter by, well, yesterday and apparently there's one in draft form somewhere. Is that a normal course of action that, or generally when you, you would request that we get a response by the date you requested?
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed that we were not able to have better information for you tonight from the Deputy Attorney General. There are two deputies assigned to this matter. One of them, I understand, is out until Monday, until next Monday, and the other is in his office but was not reachable by phone, not available to me today. So I apologize.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion.
At our meeting on July 10, 2018, we accepted the superintendent's recommendation that money from the contingency fund not be used to maintain a portion of the staffing and program costs for the district's Read-By-Grade-Three program for the 2018-2019 school year and we authorized the superintendent and legal counsel to proceed with their efforts to secure funding for the district's program from the state. The action was taken without prejudice against a reconsideration of whether to make funding available from the contingency fund. In light of the importance of maintaining at least a portion of our Read-By-Grade-Three programming efforts and pursuant to NRS 354.598-005-5C, I move that we authorize and direct the transfer of $325,120 from the budgeted 2018-2019 contingency account function 6300 to the board authorized general fund expenditure accounts function 1000 in order to fund in part certain portions of the district's Read-By-Grade-Three programming efforts for the 2018-2019 school year as presented. I further move that we authorize the superintendent and legal counsel to continue with their efforts to secure funding for the district's Read-By-Grade-Three program.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Me too. My argument.
Any concerns, comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to Agenda Item Number 11, Recommended Approval of the 2018-2022 Tentative Agreement for the Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Carson Educational Support Association, CSO. For possible action, AJ?
Thank you, President Swirzik. So the district has reached a tentative agreement with the Carson Educational Support Association for the year's four-year contract, 2018 through 2022, including a 2% salary increase or equivalent each year. It has been ratified by the Carson Educational Support Association and is here for your consideration tonight.
Questions, comments from the board?
So, in light of the fact that, and I want to apologize to all you here, being a member of labor myself and having gone through this stuff, I want you guys to know that I'm doing what I feel is the responsible thing to do. We have not been provided with copies of anything in these contracts and I think it's wholly irresponsible of this board to vote on something that deals with money if we haven't even seen it or received very little discussion on it. So in light of that, I want to make a motion, I move that we put off Item Number 11 till the next meeting when we've had an opportunity to review the contract that we're voting on.
A motion?
Question?
You second it?
No, no, no. I, no, I'm not second, no. I was jumping ahead, I'm sorry.
You can't have a discussion without a second.
Okay, I'm going to pass the gavel to Stacy and I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion board-wise? Joe?
So, in light of that, again, if you could explain to us, what does this do? I understand people are still going to get paychecks, it's just if we don't approve this, it can't change until we do, we do make the approval. So what does this, how does this impact this group? The delay, how does the delay impact this group?
So the delay would impact the group in that the paychecks that represent the New Year, the New Year's paychecks would be.
Year, the New Year's paychecks would be at last year's pay levels until that approval took place. And depending on the timing, there could potentially be some, some retro payments for classified staff that are year-round staff, they are due retro payments. So, they, there would be a delay, not, well, there's kind of a, an extra double retro within there that would have to be recalculated out. The, I think that would be ultimately the impact there on our side. It would be going through and recalculating what all of those numbers are again for the, the, the next payroll, which is significant.
So, so the point is, if this does get delayed, if it doesn't get approved and gets delayed, they'll still, if it does get approved, get, get the pay that we approved, it'll just be paid to them retroactively at a later date?
That is right, yeah.
Okay.
And the next time this could come up would be August 14th. That would be our next school board meeting. Any other comments, discussion from board? Go ahead, Ryan.
I'll add one more too. I want to apologize again too, because I know I've sat over there many times and sat in many negotiations, but I, I think it's just a really big misstep and with employee costs being about 80% of our budget, I, I, that is what we are here to do. And as a member of a bargaining group, that's my expectation of every board I've worked for, is that they read, know, and understand what they're doing. And, and we haven't had that opportunity.
And I agree, I mean, this was one of my concerns also, but I, I also have concern for our employees and our staff. And my question is, you know, and I'm only two years into serving on the board, but it seems to me that this is common practice for how this board has done business for a very long time. And so, I'm not sure why now's the time to take that stance when last meeting we ratified for, you know, the administrators and the certified employees. And so, I think it has an appearance of being unjust, in my opinion.
And, and I'm confident with our, with our staff and our legal counsel that has provided us in closed session updates on the, the terms and the corrections and everything. I, I'm confident that there, those changes are not in any way substantial changes to the previous contacts, or that they are substantial, but we've been informed of any of the substantial changes to the, that would be in this new contract as opposed to the previous contract. So, I have, I have no problem moving forward with it now to, to go ahead and approve what they have already ratified and, and what the agreement that has been reached between our council and the association and to make sure that people can get their paychecks timely and, and get the money that they're, that has been agreed upon.
And, and you know, and one of the things, just for the record, I've also just recommended that for future negotiation processes that that information be provided to board members, whether it's in the superintendent's office or in some other secured location with our legal counsel. So, I mean, I, I support the premise, I'm just not sure I want to do it on the backs of our employees right now.
And I would agree. I think you pointed out, Ryan's pointed out, one of the things that we've done over and over again, and maybe it's not the best way to do it, kind of like the superintendent evaluation, and then there's probably not as much transparency that this board likes to do either because we've been a very transparent board, but I just think that this is a wrong time to do it, but I think that in the future, I think it would be something that I would really appreciate too, to see ahead of time. But I think the updates that we get during the negotiations in our closed sessions, and there were no big ones for the ones that we got today, that I don't have a problem getting this forward. Anyone else? No? Any public comment on this? Come on up, Terry.
You're the ones we want to hear from.
Mr. Sorsak, members of the board, my name is Teri Cantley. I'm the president of CESA. It's short E, not a long E, CESA, Carson Educational Support Association. Yeah, we had the same problem with our, with the attorney, with legal counsel as well. I guess my comment is, is that this negotiations process that we went through was probably one of the most enjoyable, if I can use that word in conjunction with negotiations. It was an enjoyable process until we got to the part where we were actually drafting the tentative agreement. It got really long and drawn out, delayed for whatever reason, wording not correct, whether we can say that it was just the inexperience of new counsel, and this is really important for me to say, I would never have said this before in my entire life, but at that point in our negotiations process, I really missed Charlie Cockrell because he did write things out. Immediately, we knew exactly what we were negotiating. There was absolutely no question. With this particular process, we didn't have that luxury. It got drawn out, and then we got beyond the end of the school year. Then we had to do everything because educational support professionals, some of them don't have emails that they check when school is out. Some of them don't have the opportunity to even check their emails when school is in, but we are working on that. So, it became a process of doing everything by snail mail, which really delayed the process. We were able to ratify it, we were able to ratify it before the end of June, and I am really dismayed that you guys did not get a copy of our ratified tentative agreement before now. And I really appreciate, and I think all the members of the Educational Support Professional Group, we don't want to be called classified anymore, we're education support professionals, we would really appreciate having that raise that was intended to happen as of the new fiscal school year, which is on August the 1st. If we have to take it and go retroactive with the raises, well, I'll have a lot of explaining to do as I'm sure that this board will get a little bit of grumblings from other people as well. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to stand here in front of you and say, there's nothing untoward. We ratified the agreement with council, with the school district's negotiations team. Our members voted for that tentative agreement, so there's no surprises other than for you. And so, we really appreciate if you would move forward, and I think that the Nurses' Association would also appreciate the, the same thing as their item is the next item on the agenda as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your, for your comments. Any questions? No?
No question.
Joe?
AJ, this, you know, in light of not having this, is this ratified document available? If, say I wanted to come in tomorrow and look at it, even if it's after the vote? Is it available? I could look at it?
I can, if you want to go back tonight, we can go.
I don't want to do it tonight.
Yeah, first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Bring up one more point too, and I think this would be a matter of discussion, I guess, with Mr. Pavlakis for everybody, but in my experience, especially as with all contracts that we approve as boards, these are public docs, the public needs to see these things. So, after, once it's a tentative agreement, as our constituents need to be able to direct us if they see fit, and, and there's just more scrutiny on all these processes. And so, that's the reason I bring it up. I think the onus is on us to, to make, to make a fiduciary, proper decision. And I guess, I'm not rerunning, neither is Ron, and y'all are already in, so maybe you don't have to worry about it for a bit, but I do think that the good people that elected us expect us to read things, especially since employee costs are probably about 80% of our expenses. It's not unreasonable.
Okay, any other discussion? Go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those in favor of Ryan's motion to table this until the next meeting?
Aye.
I second, I second this, but, you know, given what was presented, I agree with Ryan in going forward, absolutely, this is what we should do, but given what the president of CESA said, yeah, employees are counting on this, and they acted in good faith, and if it's an administrative breakdown on our part, then that's, that's us, but it shouldn't be back. So, I'm, even though I second it, I'm voting against the.
So, we have one for, all those against?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you vote aye or nay?
Nay, sorry, nay. It's been a long time since I had to call for a vote. Okay, so, by mine, it fails, we have one for and four against. So, moving on to looking for a new motion, and I will turn it back over to you.
I'll make a motion.
We do have five. Well, I don't have to vote.
Okay. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the 2018-2022 tentative agreement with the following Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Carson Educational Support Association, CESA.
You pass the gavel back?
It's not even nine o'clock yet.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a, and a second. Any comments, public comments for approving the contract? Saying, yes, Ryan?
I'm gonna abstain from this vote because I don't want to vote no because I, I wouldn't. But I think I cannot vote yes for something that costs money that I have not had a chance to read and look at.
Just wondering, I know you abstain when you have a pecuniary interest or something, and is there just an unwillingness to vote? Is that sufficient reason to abstain from voting?
Not typically, but I believe that's trustee Green's prerogative. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and let's do it this way. Renee, just call the roll, so we get this documented.
Trustee Green, you're abstaining?
Yes.
Trustee Crossman?
Aye.
Trustee Cassiope?
Aye.
Trustee Walker?
Aye.
Trustee Sw, uh, Wilkie?
Aye.
Trustee Sorsak?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number 12, and that's the recommended approval of the 2018-19 tentative agreement for the Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Carson City Health Services Personnel Association, CCHSPA. AJ?
Thank you, President Sorsak. Tonight, we ask for consideration to approve a tentative agreement between the Carson City School District, Carson City Health Services Professional Association for a one-year contract for the next school year, including a 2% increase for salary. The, in the, there is no, there is no change in the contract from last year or from the prior agreement.
If there's no, okay, they're getting their 2%, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, Mike?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the 2018-19 tentative agreement for the Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Carson City Health Services Personnel Association.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion on the, on the motion?
No, I, the same thing with that, there's no reason to put on another charade, but I'm gonna abstain from this one. And, and I understand it's only 2%, but it's just the same, it's the principle of it, so.
Joe?
And the only reason I bring this up is because CESA came up and, and said, you know, walked us through some of what they went through, so I appreciate that, and I assume the same thing with this. I mean, you, you know, you guys, yeah, I, I think what I'm saying is I'd like to hear from you before I cast my vote.
Hello, my name's Carrie Finn. I'm the president of CCHSPA. Fairly new at this, so it was a great experience working with everybody. It was, it was really fun. And yeah, we, you know, it was me by myself, so that was, that was interesting. We have a small group, but we would really appreciate it if you guys passed it because we do count on this. And I already had to ask AJ last month to give me an answer because people were asking, how come I didn't get my, you know, I had to explain to him, you know, we, the fiscal year is moving and has to go before the board, so we would really appreciate it if you guys passed it today.
Thank you for your comments. Any, any questions, comments?
You know, I would just, I'd just say to both groups, thanks for working with the staff. I know it's a long process and it's, it's not something most people look forward to doing, so we appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
And I have to tell you, after being all over the state, people say negotiations, I don't think wonderful experience ever comes up, so it's nice to hear that in Carson City that it's a good experience.
Well, we did a lot of laughing this year, so it was, it was fun. I was looking forward to AJ's answers from his icebreaker questions. He always had something funny to say.
Let's not talk about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Fiscal.
Okay, AJ, any additional comments you want to make? Anything additional from board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pounce? We have one, one abstention.
Thank you.
As a discussion of possible action to approve a 2% salary increase for fiscal years 2018 to '22 for associate superintendents, directors, managers, and other employees not covered by the association contracts. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As you know, there are groups of our staff members who are not covered by any collective bargaining agreement processes, and because of the actions taken last week and tonight, which really does implement a 2% salary increase in the next four years for our, for our other employees, I would like to petition the board to consider the same 2% salary increase for those groups mentioned in this agenda item for each of the fiscal years 2018 through 2020.
I just have a question. I need to disclose that I believe my brother, so the level of consanguinity, is an employee of the district that would fall within this category. And so, Mr. Pavlakis, I know I need to disclose it, does that also require me to abstain?
I don't believe so. He's not dependent on you for support or vice versa, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, comments, questions, concerns? Take a motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve a 2% salary increase for fiscal years 2018 to 2022 for associate superintendents, directors, managers, and other. other employees not covered by association contracts.
Motion.
Motion and a second. Comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion and second. Any comments from the audience, public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
You know, could I?
I just want to say thanks to Mr. Stokes, Mr. Pavlakis, and all the staff for, I know this read-by-grate drink has really consumed much of the summer work of you all that wasn't expected or anticipated. So thank you for keeping us informed and fighting the fight for us. So we appreciate your efforts.
Okay, on to agenda item number 16, requests for future agenda topics. Go ahead, Mike.
You know, and I had, I had talked about this at the last meeting, about developing some kind of a policy that would hopefully eliminate the chances of students having successive years of substitute teachers in the place of teachers. And so, you know, I mean, I'd be happy to work with you, Mr. Stokes, on maybe kind of drafting something, or having a discussion as a board to kind of get that, that ball rolling. So I think it's important for our kiddos.
Mr. Walker, Mr. President, if I might, if I might just add, rather than put forward a, or spend time on a, on a possible policy or regulation, would it be possible to have the discussion and then take whatever action after that that comes back? I mean, I know that might stretch this process out at least one more board meeting, but I think it's important to talk about what you're asking in terms of policy and regulation, because that really does then limit some of the flexibility that principals have in doing this work. And I think it would be valuable for us to talk about that prior to spending time on policy or regulation.
And I'm open to that. I think that, you know, I think that this is a discussion that's been a long time coming. And it's, you know, in a, unfortunately, in the circumstances we have, I think we just need to do what we can to protect the best interest of our students. And that's, that's why I'm advocating, because I know that, I, I would venture to say that anybody in this room would make sure their child didn't have two, three, four successive years of being taught by unlicensed teachers. So, I mean, I'm just saying that I'm advocating for our kiddos, because that's what we're supposed to do. So I'm happy to have a conversation.
Would, I wouldn't be opposed to, say, doing a committee. I'm not opposed to having a discussion either, but maybe assigning a couple of board members to a committee with some administrators or something to do that. Well, we do have a policy committee, but this is a, this is a different instance, I guess.
Well, and I'm wondering if there's anything, like a superintendent's directive or something, because I think that's kind of what Mr. Stokes is saying, that perhaps it's not a policy that we put in, regulation that we put in, but some sort of directive that he could issue to sides.
Can I clarify, Mr. Stokes? Is, I'm not asking to make it prohibited. I know that in today's environment, there may be instances where we can't get around it. You know what I mean? But, you know, I think trustee Cassioppo and I kind of had talked about doing everything we can, and kind of putting that into a policy that would strongly, I guess, encourage schools not to do that, if that makes sense.
Well, and this would be obviously part of the discussion that we would have, but just, just from a perspective right now, I can tell you that our principals do try to not put students in a situation where they may have a long-term sub for two years running. But what happens when you set up that schedule for the coming year, and then unbeknownst or unplanned, the teacher that may have been a longstanding teacher comes up with a long-term illness? Now, now you're looking at possibly doing a number of changes that was never the intent in the first place. And so I just think it reduces some of the flexibility that the principals have in trying to manage some of these things. But I certainly am not opposed to having the discussion and seeing if there's language that works.
And, you know, and honestly, this is in, in reference to a number of concerns that have been brought to me personally, and by teacher friends, you know what I mean? And just stories of kids who have had, like, three successive years where they didn't have a licensed teacher. And then they're in fourth, fifth grade, and we're looking at testing. And I think some of those early interventions might have been missed just because lack of training. You know, our substitutes work really hard, but it's, they lack that level of training that our, our certified teach, which I know you understand.
And I am for that, since I was one of the board members that brought that up as well. I'm for the discussion. I think it's important to have it. You know, and as part of the discussion, as you're kind of gathering data to present to us, and we have that discussion, I'd be curious, you know, of, of obviously, one, getting a number of how many, however you decide to do it, how many kids have successive substitutes? And if we can pair that with test scores, so we get a sense of what is this doing to the kids in terms of academics and test scores? I think that's going to be important. I mean, if we theoretically found out that, hey, these kids who have had subs for four years in a row are still achieving the, you know, the same on tests as kids who have teachers, maybe it's a different conversation.
And that would be evidence to present to the state on increasing funding for education, because it's directly impacting academic achievement, and we can't pay teachers enough to take the jobs.
Okay, I do have a future agenda item, and I wish you would just stay with me right here. I gotta get this on the record. And the agenda item is, is to be worded Artificial Intelligence and the Future of K-12 Education. And I say this because there's a lot of scholar, the articles out very timely, this is moving into the K-12 arena. So the definition, let me give, give you a general definition, and I would, the reason for this agenda item is to have our professional staff come to us with what they think is going to happen with artificial intelligence. And when we talk about the future of K-12 education, how does it impact, impact us? Or possibly impact us? As a general definition of this, it's computer software programmed to interact with the world in ways normally requiring human intelligence. This definition, and I hope the staff would come back with a better definition, which would include the science and engineering in making intelligent machines. And why to have this agenda item is to begin the conversation so that we can shape the future of our district, and understanding and having the useful impacts of artificial intelligence on our students, teachers, and communities. That is something, and how, but there are three areas to be covered by staff. How is artificial intelligence reshaping our economy, the world economy? We need to know that. It applies to our curriculum matters and where we're going. How is artificial intelligence changing what it means to be an engaged citizen? It also goes to our strategic plan. Our role is to teach students to think and act critically and ethically, and that's in the workforce and beyond. How do students talk effectively to intelligent machines? Starts, things are changing. And three, how can artificial intelligence provide more personalized instruction for all students? And this goes along with our learner center model. I think it would add and build to it. How do students learn? And how does artificial intelligence begin to play a role? And for the role of teachers, it's important, because artificial intelligence, according to articles, offers teachers deeper insight into teaching and learning, but it doesn't mean replacing them. But again, there's a lot of things that are moving, you know, in our, in our world today. And we ought to be in step, or at least be, and not just let it evolve, but we can reshape it to our district's needs and wants. And, you know, where are we right now? I mean, we've got access to the internet with students, and we've got e-learning. We've got automation combined with virtual reality. We've got this, you know, that at the, at our library. But as we think about self-driving autos, Bluetooth speakers, robots, both in manufacturing, robots that perform surgery in the medical field, drones, I mean, it goes on and on and on. And then all of us, or not all of us, many of us might have our intelligent digital assistants called Alexa or Siri. And you start thinking, how does this impact K-12 education? Our goal is student achievement and success in life. This is happening, it's here. How do we make it beneficial to our students, teachers, and community? Anyway, there's a lot, but I wanted to give enough direction. And Richard and I talked a little bit about this.
You know, Mr., I, I think Mr. Stokes and Mrs. Keem are ready to get up and do this presentation right now.
Anyway.
I think, I think those are really good questions, because I think there's, I think, I think about that in aspects of all areas of society right now, is things are changing so fast, and as educators, it is really hard to stay in front of the curve and meet the needs of the kids. And so, I mean, it's a, it's a good discussion to start. I, I feel, I'm sure Mr. Stokes is thinking, well, who am I going to get to teach me about some of these things, right?
We have the A-team, we'll, we'll pull this off.
Okay, any other, any other future agenda items? Seeing, hearing none?
Just real quick, just because I just finished signing the NASB nomination cover letters, and some of the nominations that we talked about and approved doing don't yet have cover letters. So do we want to bring that back again at the next meeting on the 14th, or just like bring the signatures to get them? Do you guys want to see that again, or do you just want to stop by the office to sign any?
Was it Lyon County?
Lyon County wasn't there, and the school, I don't know if the school board of the year. So we can just go to the office.
Okay. Well, Lyon County was governance team. So the school board of the year of Carson City Schools. Okay, here's one, Laurel, here's one for the, no, this is the western board of Harlem.